Thank you Chair Consala, members of the board. Good afternoon. Our first item is an opportunity to begin the board's efforts towards setting your legislative agenda for 2024. So this will be a first step in that process as you begin to identify priorities. And we have an activity much like last year for you to participate in, but Ken Blackstone's going to kick us off.
Thank you very much, Dr. Cashwell and board members. Good afternoon. Today, we start the process, as mentioned, of formulating our legislative priorities for the upcoming session. Like last year, we felt a good way to gather your input was using one of our professional learning protocols, the Notice Like Wonder Protocol, the same as last year. Today's sole objective is to gather your input, to shape our priorities, and then we will come back at the October 12 meeting with a draft of the new priorities, talk a little bit about the hot topics for the 24th session, and then bring back the final product at your November meeting for your approval. So with that, I'd like to invite you down to the tables on the floor so that we can begin the protocol. And I have assisting me today our Chief Communications Officer Eileen Cox, who will be helping to transcribe our feedback. And Ms. Shea, if you could, like last year, serve as our timekeeper, that would be great. And at your table is a copy of last year's legislative priorities and an abbreviated scorecard, which is an updated excerpt from the review of the session that we did in May. These were the two items that were attached to this agenda item. And I have also included an agenda of the protocol on the right-hand side so that we can all follow along with that and stay on our timeline, because I know we're on a tight So we're going to start by looking at the, if you look at the agenda sheet and you'll see the rounds, and if you remember from last year, we'll go through, we'll take a minute for you to look at it, write down your thoughts, and then we're going to go through in a quick round robin format for you to first use these note cards here that talk about what you notice and then what you like. And again, just write down one, or you can write down several, but we're going to say one, mention one, and then go around, and then we'll mention the second one if there's more than one that you have listed. So is, are there any questions?
Can we begin with the notice?
The notice?
Okay.
Mm-hmm. The notice round.
Okay.
And so if you'll review the legislative priorities, and you can also look at the, that scorecard page, and then we'll take four minutes to write down your, what you noticed, and then we'll go through that at that time. There is an example that's in the agenda that would be, an example of the notice would And then I do have a microphone for you all to pass around, and you can start in, since, Marcy, I guess, since you have the mic, we can start with you, but we're going to just do the notice statements one at a time without discussion, so, and then we'll just go around.
I notice most positions are rooted in or tied to funding.
be, I notice a lot of these positions focus around teacher retention, for example.
Eileen, I'll give you time to write.
Okay.
I noticed that several priorities are repeated every year that I've been on the board, like no unfunded mandates. We keep saying that, but it's true.
We keep saying the same thing, we just need, we need something to change, right? And a lot of that starts, a lot of that starts with folks higher than the school board working together, right? Hearing the legislative priorities of school divisions around the state. Marcy, I had the same as you, majority of these priorities mentioned funding. And then I would just like to say, not that there's still not work to be done, but how much we've accomplished as it relates to decreasing testing, increasing security, and we've been focused on student and staff, mental health, and our recruit retain reward efforts for all employees, not just our teachers, right? Ms. Atkins?
Well, it's going to sound like a broken record, because mine says funding continues to be a challenge and impacts most of 2023 priorities still. And then I have similar priorities to previous years, and they just have to be aligned and help us to achieve the mission and goals.
I noticed that the state understood and understands the need to remove barriers to support provisional licensure for prospective teachers.
Does anyone, other? My others were already covered by colleagues, we're on the same page.
I had actually a couple of others. That we, a lot of the things that are listed in our priorities, we have in common with other boards around the state. We all have these same issues, like teacher retention and the funding issues. But I also said that a lot of our priorities seek support for teachers. And it's not just retention, it's just, you know, that support in general. But my biggest notice was that we support more than we oppose. And if you look at this, it's in the positive, we support, support, support. And so I think that's a really good strategy to say what we are wanting for people as opposed to working against, let's get what we can accomplish.
I would just like to highlight, I noticed that, you know, just the facts for all the school divisions around the state, that I noticed that Henrico schools, the diversity of our division, and that's, that's very special, the makeup of our schools.
And so I just put a short statement, when we're looking at the shift in diversity with 35.2% being African-American, it wasn't always that way. So there's some trends that I think we are certainly seeing. I believe it was Caucasian for a while, and now it's African-American with the majority. So it's very interesting to take a look at trends and how impactful culture will be in the future.
I noticed that there is a sense of urgency, because the word critical is used several times.
That's time.
Great. That's great. We were able to go around twice in our, in our four minutes. We are now going to move to the like round, and like the notice round, no pun intended, the, you'll review the, the same priorities and material, and an example of a like would be, I like how these priorities align with our strategic plan.
That was my like, Ken.
I'm sorry. If you want to start the clock for four minutes. And we are, we can go with Reverend Cooper this time and go around, and a like could also be not always just looking back at what we've done before, but maybe it's a continuation of something that we're continuing to emphasize.
Well, thank you for saying it after we finished it, so I appreciate that.
What's that?
Never mind. I'm glad you didn't hear it, so. I like that you didn't hear it. How about that one?
That's good. And we have five minutes for this one.
I like that we are continuing to prioritize how our legislative priorities focus on equity and equality for all of our students.
Well, there you go, just exactly what we were saying, a continuation.
And so we're doing one at a time and going around?
Yes, one at a time, and we'll just go around several times.
So I like that we continue to develop priorities around safe schools and student wellness.
I like how our priorities focus on the whole student.
I like that we have very specific and clear language as to what we need to support teachers. For example, national board certification, licensure, things like that. It's, it gives that, you know, what the real need is. I like that.
I like the focus on teacher supports and support staff to allow teachers to focus on teaching and learning.
I like that we continue to advocate for legislation to define the role of special education advocates.
If we could just pause one second, I think Eileen might need a minute to catch up.
Mary had a little lamb. No, right then. I like how we continue to advocate for legislation to define the role of special education advocates. Thank you, ma'am.
Keep on writing, keep on writing. So I like the process that we are using to create our priorities and have the ability to look back at what the big wins were and how this one process can really define how we move forward, because we can look back at what we have done and see how we were successful and where we can make improvements in our language.
I like that the support of our board of supervisors counterparts helps us find all of the shortfalls from the state.
Okay. You good, Eileen? Okay. I like the focus on security needs and, because we have a special, we have a section on safe schools and so security, but also it goes back to what we, somebody said before about student wellness, tying those things together, I think is important.
I like that we've already implemented these wins in our schools with our staffing and other considerations.
You got one minute and 26 seconds?
So I'll go ahead and give you my two, which were that the priorities align with our goals and plans, and that, similar to Mickey, that it's a positive approach to asking for what we want and what we need in the division.
You got that?
I like that as a board, we're on the same page, not only understanding the needs of our community, but also in our priorities, in how to meet the needs of our community.
I do not like Reverend Cooper right now. He's heckling me. I like the removal of systematic barriers to licensure while maintaining quality instructors.
Okay, great. And then I do have a microphone for you all to pass around, and you can start in, since, Marcy, I guess, since you have the mic, we can start with you, but we're going to just do the notice statements one at a time without discussion, so, and then we'll just go around.
I notice most positions are rooted in or tied to funding.
Eileen, I'll give you time to write.
Okay.
I noticed that several priorities are repeated every year that I've been on the board, like no unfunded mandates. We keep saying that, but it's true.
We keep saying the same thing, we just need, we need something to change, right? And a lot of that starts, a lot of that starts with folks higher than the school board working together, right? Hearing the legislative priorities of school divisions around the state. Marcy, I had the same as you, majority of these priorities mentioned funding. And then I would just like to say, not that there's still not work to be done, but how much we've accomplished as it relates to decreasing testing, increasing security, and we've been focused on student and staff, mental health, and our recruit retain reward efforts for all employees, not just our teachers, right? Ms. Atkins?
Well, it's going to sound like a broken record, because mine says funding continues to be a challenge and impacts most of 2023 priorities still. And then I have similar priorities to previous years, and they just have to be aligned and help us to achieve the mission and goals.
I noticed that the state understood and understands the need to remove barriers to support provisional licensure for prospective teachers.
Does anyone, other? My others were already covered by colleagues, we're on the same page.
I had actually a couple of others. That we, a lot of the things that are listed in our priorities, we have in common with other boards around the state. We all have these same issues, like teacher retention and the funding issues. But I also said that a lot of our priorities seek support for teachers. And it's not just retention, it's just, you know, that support in general. But my biggest notice was that we support more than we oppose. And if you look at this, it's in the positive, we support, support, support. And so I think that's a really good strategy to say what we are wanting for people as opposed to working against, let's get what we can accomplish.
I would just like to highlight, I noticed that, you know, just the facts for all the school divisions around the state, that I noticed that Henrico schools, the diversity of our division, and that, that's very special, the makeup of our schools.
And so I just put a short statement, when we're looking at the shift in diversity with 35.2% being African-American, it wasn't always that way. So there's some trends that I think we are certainly seeing. I believe it was Caucasian for a while, and now it's African-American with the majority. So it's very interesting to take a look at trends and how impactful culture will be in the future.
I noticed that there is a sense of urgency, because the word critical is used several times.
That's time.
Great. That's great. We were able to go around twice in our, in our four minutes. We are now going to move to the like round, and like the notice round, no pun intended, the, you'll review the, the same priorities and material, and an example of a like would be, I like how these priorities align with our strategic plan.
That was my like, Ken.
I'm sorry. So if you want to start the clock for four minutes.
I wonder when counselor to student ratios will be decreased by the VDOE to better support our students.
I wonder how we can develop a better relationship with our state elected leaders locally. I know we have our breakfast, but I think we can do more to develop that relationship, especially in light of the fact that we're in such close proximity where the legislature gathers. I would like for us to be more involved in that process.
Because guns do not belong in our schools, I wonder how we continue our support of safe storage, as well as accountability for parents who do not store weapons safely, and they end up in our schools.
I wonder what our division would look like if all of our support for funding requests were passed.
I wonder how the state is memorializing the pandemic and the impacts, not just on academics, but well-being on children for the future. And that's very special, the makeup of our schools.
And so I just put a short statement when we're looking at the shift in diversity with 35.2% being African-American. It wasn't always that way. So there are some trends that I think we are certainly seeing. I believe it was Caucasian for a while, and now it's African-American with the majority. So it's very interesting to take a look at trends and how impactful culture will be in the future.
I noticed that there is a sense of urgency because the word critical is used several times.
Great. That's great. We were able to go around twice in our four minutes. We are now going to move to the like round and like the notice round, no pun intended. You'll review the same priorities and material. And an example of a like would be, I like how these priorities align with our strategic plan.
How was my like, Ken?
I'm sorry. So if you want to start the clock, four minutes.
Okay. Start again here. We'll have five minutes for our round robin responses.
I wonder what impact this election will have on our legislative wins for 2024.
That's a good one.
I wonder from the state wellness policy that most Virginia public schools have to abide by, I wonder specifically in the space of nutrition, how we could be more flexible in our meals that we offer to students, as well as policy around allowing schools to have more farm-to-table options.
I wonder when counselor-to-student ratios will be decreased by the VDOE to better support our students.
I wonder how we can develop a better relationship with our state-elected leaders locally. I know we have our breakfast, but I think we can do more to develop that relationship, especially in light of the fact that we're in such close proximity where the legislature gathers. I would like for us to be more involved in that process.
Because guns do not belong in our schools, I wonder how we continue our support of safe storage, as well as accountability for parents who do not store weapons safely, and they end up in our schools.
I wonder what our division would look like if all of our support for funding requests were passed.
I wonder how the state is memorializing the pandemic and the impacts, not just on academics, but well-being on children for the future.
I wonder when teacher pay in Virginia will be increased to be in line with the national average.
At a minimum. Right. I hear you. Okay. And I wonder how we can be the voice for the students and families that have the greatest needs, those that are in foster care, the families that are having housing challenges, special needs, those kinds of things. Those families need more supports than ever, so we could be the voice for them.
As the shift in funding models is discussed at the state, I wonder how we ensure that all schools who receive public funds are held to the same requirements as public schools.
I know. Y'all will read these, though.
Yes. So we will take the...
Let's just go one more round. Go another round.
Absolutely. This is your exercise.
All right. Instructed by the chair, another five.
I wonder what the legislative priorities would look like from a student center perspective if our high school students completed this activity.
I wonder how long it's going to take for the state to provide clear guidelines, requirements, and investment in individualized education plans and 504s, along with assistive technology.
I wonder if class size limits, as set by the state, were decreased, would we still need to request all of the funding for supports? For example, tutoring. You know, we would have stronger relationships in our classrooms. Would we have, you know, discipline concerns? I think class size affects a lot.
And this is a good one, actually, piggybacking off of Ms. Kinsella. I wonder how we help legislators understand the shortcomings of current SOQ ratios. Llamas Cox writes, I'll just say, because even if they fully fund the SOQ ratios, if the ratios aren't reflecting what's best needs of our students, then we're still not getting the funding and support need.
I wonder how we can educate our legislators on innovative learning, such as virtual academies, and how do we continue to learn from them and invest in them as well. And then I'll just do one more. I just said that last time, now it's like three. But I also wonder how long or what it will take to have stable internet access within our schools and in our school communities.
Okay. Well, the next part is the reflections of myself and Eileen. And I did write down a couple of notes regarding the priorities that we have had some of the same priorities, but we've also been successful at them. And while something like no unfunded mandates is a staple on the legislative priorities, it's also something that we have to remain vigilant and keep on there. And I actually feel like this year that we were successful in that priority. And let's see. I noticed that your comments were very teacher and student centric, which is fabulous. I like the comment about the plain language of our priorities, that they're, I think last year we made a concerted effort to streamline them and certainly make them more focused and kind of, you know, focus it down and not be as broad. I love the idea about more involvement in advocacy, and I have some thoughts about this that I can share in the next time that we meet on October 12. But basically, what I think that one part of that could be communicating, having me communicate to you all when there are opportunities to come and testify in front of subcommittees and committees. One thing I observed last year is how powerful that really is when other elected officials come and speak. I think that the delegates and senators really, that carries a lot of weight with them. Unfortunately, we don't, a lot of times don't have a lot of notice when something's coming up. So, and I think the last thing was to make sure I run all examples by the superintendent.
So I think some of the big takeaways for me, I really appreciate your engagement in the activity. I feel like this year and last year, the priorities really better reflect your goals as a group and your priorities as a board. And so having the opportunity to both review your cards and the comments that we shared here today, I think that gives us a good sense of the things that are priorities for you, and it allows us to bring back something that we hope that you'll be able to support in November. The other thing, I think it's important that you recognized the items that we don't have any control over as a board. You know, we don't know yet what the impact of the election is going to be. We don't know about some of the funding. So it takes into account some of those items that we can't control in your priorities, but that we want to address them and acknowledge them. So I think this is a really great start for us. And as Ken said at the beginning of the protocol, the next step will be for our team to work with the various departments across the division leadership to flesh out some of the things that you've identified as priority areas and bring back a draft for you at the next meeting to consider and then hopefully approve with any modifications that are needed at the November meeting. So thank you very much. We appreciate your participation, and we welcome you to return to the dais.